Good evening, everybody. I need a motion to come out of closed session, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Potaglia is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrosse?
Aye. I need a motion to close the executive session.
Hold on a second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Potaglia is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrosse?
Aye. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Do you want me to just?
Yeah, sorry.
Break it for me, okay. Meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10:4-6 at SEC, notice of which was sent to the record on the Star Ledger and was posted on the municipal bulletin board.
Roll call.
Councilmember Potaglia is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Here.
Councilmember Sims?
Here.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Here.
Mayor LaBrosse?
Here. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Are those gentlemen here? Yeah? They're here?
Um, I think so, but I'm not sure. For the proclamation.
Yes.
I have two proclamations this evening. Would Walter Sutherland and Nathaniel Jones, please come forward if you're here? Are they here?
James?
No, they're not here, but I'm gonna read these anyway. Whereas on Sunday, July 24th, 2016, Walter Sutherland, a city sanitation employee, and his friend Nathaniel Jones were enjoying a day of fishing behind Pep Boys on South River Street when they observed a young boy yelling for help. And whereas Mr. Sutherland and Mr. James ran to the Bogota Bridge and saw one of the men in the boat had fallen into the water and one of the passengers was unconscious in the boat. And whereas Mr. Sutherland and Mr. James, without any regard for their personal safety, immediately entered the water to help the man and the woman who were in distress. They assisted the male passenger back into the boat and assisted with CPR on the female passenger until the ambulance arrived. Now, therefore, I, John P. LaBrosse Jr., mayor of the city of Hackensack, along with members of the city council, do hereby honor Walter Sutherland and Nathaniel Jones for their bravery during the events of July 24th, 2016. Um, I wish these gentlemen were here. It's, you know, it takes a special kind of person to put the, you know, the lives of others before your own. And they're true heroes, they're Hackensack heroes, and we appreciate their efforts. Thank you. Thank you. And, Mr. Hogan, I believe you have some business here for that. I'd like everybody to welcome our county clerk, Mr. John Hogan.
Mayor, members of the governing body, and members of the city of Hackensack. Thank you for allowing me to come here this evening. I won't take up too much of your time because I follow the newspapers and I see Hackensack as always a busy place. And you have a lot of business to conduct. But we bring some important information. Um, I'm just gonna hold this up so the governing body can see it. And then I'll hold it up for the residents also. I want to speak to you this evening about my offices around the county initiative. Now, you're the county seat, so Mawa benefits a lot more than Hackensack from this. But I want to make you aware of it because you may have seen it in the newspaper. I don't want to feel you feel left out in any way. Um, the Around the County Initiative started about two years ago. And what we do is we offer communities to come out and set up temporary satellite offices within the community where we conduct business for three days. Passports, business trade names, notary publics. We do photo cards for veterans, for exempt firefighters, and for senior citizens. And some of the election stuff, you can get vote-by-mail applications and photo registration forms. We don't need to do that in Hackensack. You can come right over to my office, but I'm just looking to make you aware of it. Another thing I should make you aware of is on the bottom, you can see that there's a short video that you can find on my website that highlights the need to get registered to vote and then to vote. And so many people get registered to vote and then don't bother voting. Or they vote once every four years, or once every eight years if they're still on the rolls. So we took some summer interns, a couple of summers ago. They were a little bored with sealing envelopes and filing stuff away and scanning. And we locked them in a conference room. It wasn't really locked. We told them, "Stay in here until you get the job done." And we asked them to put a video together for us. And that video had to promote voting. We said, "We want to appeal to college-age students." But what they came out with, after some serious editing by Steve, was a video that we've been able to use through the schools and also through some civic organizations. We used it for my daughter's kindergarten class when she was in kindergarten, all the way up to college and everything in between. People see it. We went to one high school two days before the end of voter registration last year, two days before. They were a little rowdy. It was like senior week. And we spoke about the need to get registered to vote. We got them interested. We showed them the video. And we got about half of the kids there got registered to vote. Let's hope they went out and actually voted. So we do presentations like this on voting. Presentations on the services offered by my office. Take us up on it. I know we've been to some Hackensack schools. I think we were at the middle school already a couple of years ago. Um, we've, we've had presentations for senior citizens in Hackensack civic groups. But if anyone's interested in hearing more about the clerk's office or voting, please take us up on it. Now, for the big reason that we're here this evening. A big portion of our Around the County Initiative, and can we just show this to the audience also? I'm sorry. A big portion of our Around the County Initiative is that the sheriff and I have an ongoing dispute. But we're friends before he became sheriff, before I became clerk. He says that his position as a constitutional officer has been around longer than mine. I say, "Mine's been around longer." He says he has a document that says "sheriff," whatever that means. And I said, "Fine." Someone needed to keep the land records way back when, before America was America, while we fell under the rule of a king. And that was the county clerk. The county clerk had to keep land records, had to keep the minutes of freeholders. County clerk did everything. Thank God, times have changed. But, um, we have a map that I can show to you. And we also have another map tonight that's pretty interesting of Mawa. It's on animal skin and has teepees on it. So that may be my best proof that the sheriff's wrong, but I only say it when he's not around because he carries a gun. My job is to preserve all those records that came so many, many years ago into the clerk's office. A lot of those records, especially in the communities that have been around for a while, they go back, of course, before Vietnam, before Persian Gulf, before Korean War, before World War II and the Great Depression, before World War I, before the Spanish-American War. And one that we're gonna show you tonight is before the Civil War. The other night, we showed one before the Civil War and one during the Civil War. Um, the county clerk's role was to preserve these records. And my predecessors preserved them pretty well, probably for the last century. Technology has changed. They were put in boxes, on shelves, in dark rooms that no one goes into and probably no one's seen for 50, 100 years or more. So we pulled out all of these documents from all 70 towns when they came to be and even before. They were known by the names that they're known by today. And we decided to have them all scanned. We don't only want to preserve them on the shelves. We want to preserve them forever. So we scanned all of these documents so we have permanent record. Then we took the actual documents and we put them in acid-free sleeves so that hopefully they'll stay with us forever. It's some really, really cool stuff. And I can tell you just a couple of highlights from other towns. We have a poster that almost looks like a wanted poster. It was on a tree at the corner of Elm and Main, let's say. And it told about where the voting was gonna occur for the incorporation of that town. We have the original legal notices. We have the first exempt firefighter, those who served seven years or more in a community. We have those papers. We have original maps. My job is to preserve, but then I took it a step further. I put a little bit more of a burden on my shoulders. I think that I should share those documents with you and with the communities. That they shouldn't be sitting around a box or scanned, sitting in a computer. That somehow we need to get them out. So we had a senior staff meeting one day, and I go, "How can we do that?" And we round table'd it. Everybody came up with crazy ideas. And finally, we came up with this, which we're gonna present to you in a little bit. We put a collage together of what we thought were the most unique documents for your community. The ones that maybe you haven't seen, maybe you have. We thought they were unique and prime for display. I'm not an historian. I don't profess to be. Love history, though. So we decided just to present them for people to interpret. Now, I've been able to look at them close up, analyze them. I can tell you the first time I did this, I did this without my Gyp Notes and I couldn't see a thing. I was probably making updates and stuff just to get through the presentation. But tonight, we have the real stuff. We have this map here, which from a distance doesn't look like much, but the original is something to see. The map was filed January of 1830. That map was before the Spanish-American War, was also before the Civil War. And probably no one's seen it since because it's probably been sitting there. It's a map of the limits of Bergen County, New Jersey. But the site, and as I mentioned, some of the locations on here, you'll see it's of Hackensack way back when. Anthony pointed out to me that it has a tree, a couple of trees drawn, hand-drawn on the actual map. And I'm just gonna mention some stores that are along what says to be Main Street at the time. And we have Bridge Street. We also have the Hackensack Patterson Turnpike. We have the Bergen Turnpike to Fort Lee is on here also. But along Main Street, you have A Boyd, who owned either a piece of property or a store. You have A double, A W Campbell and Zabriskie. You have A W Campbell again, who probably owned most of Hackensack because he also had an office. I don't, I didn't study the history of Hackensack. But you have the Paulson Store and the P E Risk Shop, which I wonder what went on there. So, um, and the tree, of course. So that's this map, which we felt was very, very unique, which you probably haven't seen. Maybe your historians have. We have another map right here. It's a map of the property of the L. H. Campbell Esquire, the same guy again, uh, property. It was filed January 11th, 1870, in the clerk's office. And it has Hudson Street on here, it has Campbell Avenue, Grove Street, New Street, Essex Street, State Street, Hyler. So this is Hackensack way back when. We have, and I'm going in date order, these are exempt fire certificates right here. The first exempt fire certificate is for Clarence S. Smith. He served the fire department for seven years plus. It was filed December 19th, 1914, in the county clerk's office. The, either the chief or the mayor was William Ziegler. Any historians, any Hackensack historians?
Albert.
And Fred J. Thompson was the clerk. We have another one for exempt firefighter, George M. Hall. That was filed in the county clerk's office July 12th, 1921. William Ziegler was actually the chief. We find that out from the second one. And William Shaft was the clerk. Two more documents. We have a letter that stated July 14th, 1933. It's to one of my predecessors who's long since gone, James W. Mercer, the county clerk. It says, "A special election to change the form of government of the city of Hackensack." That election was held on May 22nd, 1933. The vote on the city manager form of government was as follows. I bet you're all dying to know the results. Against, 2,409. For, 3,185. And the total votes cast were 5,594. At the special election, they also elected the following candidates as members of the governing body, as council members. Oh, boy. William Eck, Charles Orth, Ernest Corn, Ralph F. DeClaramont, and Robert A. Alsher, I believe it is. And then the final one we have, mayor, that we'd like to share with you and your community, September 4th, 1949. This one, we thought was pretty unique. It's a resolution offered by Councilman Engel and seconded by Councilman Barrett. Be resolved that in accordance with ordinance number 406, entitled "An Ordinance to Create a Body Corporate to be Known as the Parking Authority of the City of Hackensack." So this set up Hackensack's parking authority. And we also have the legal notice, which set up Hackensack's parking authority. I bet a lot of people wish that never even happened, but it was a moment in history. Mayor, I'd just like to close, just to put it all in context. Um, as you know, Hackensack's been our county seat. It was officially named New Barbados Township until 1921. But informally, it was known for a long time as Hackensack. On November 21st, 1921, the city of Hackensack was officially incorporated. What happened in 1921? I know.
Crash?
The first commissioner of baseball was named. The Yankees purchased 20 acres in the Bronx for Yankee Stadium. The president was Warren G. Harding. Albert Einstein happens to lecture in New York City on his new theory of relativity. Iowa imposes the first state cigarette tax. The first sports broadcast occurred on the radio. Does anyone know what sport it was? Boxing. Boxing. West Virginia imposes its first state sales tax. So we know it's not New Jersey that did it first, or New York. Um, the American Soccer League is formed. Babe Ruth, this one I really like. Babe Ruth is arrested for speeding. He's fined $100. He's held in jail until 4:00 PM. And then right after that, same year, he becomes the all-time home run champ. And finally, President Harding dedicates the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier at Arlington National Cemetery. So mayor, we'd like to present this to you and the governing body.
Wonderful.
You can display it as you see fit.
Take a picture?
Anyplace within?
Picture? Come on, I'll take a picture.
We have a duplicate of this, which is gonna be put with all the other 69 towns.
Uh-huh.
In our Land Records Management Division. The giant room where all of these are more, which is off for permanent.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Max. Thank you, members of the governing body. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Good night. Is she here? There we, ICal's here. And last but not least, we have representative from ICal here. How are you?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Um, we're here. My name is Osiris Barsenas. I'm the president of ICal, Instituto de Cultura y Arte Latinoamericano in Hackensack. Um, I work with Sara Colombani, which is the founder. And we've been working with the city since 2007, promoting arts and culture. And we do classes here at the Civic Center. I'm here for two reasons. First, because, um, we're happy to, on behalf of ICal, um, we're happy to give a pleasure, to make a donation to the Performing Arts Center. Uh, we've been doing activities, fundraisers, to raise money for, um, different situations that happen to our community. But this one is very important for us because we've been working with the Performing Arts Center for years. And we're happy that we're gonna have a new place to show all the culture that we have in Hackensack. And we raised $3,000 in a party that we did a month ago. And we're gonna give you the check with that amount of money. And we're so happy for that and proud also. And, um, I'm also here because, um, as a president, I'm also a zumba instructor here at the Civic Center. So you might hear the loud music sometimes here going on. That's me dancing, promoting wealth and, you know, healthy environment here. But I'm also the dance instructor and choreographer for a group that we've been, that been growing here in Hackensack. Um, it's ICal Folklore Dance Group. We promote Colombian folklore. And we've been showing our music and dances in New York, Pennsylvania, showing that in Hackensack, we have a beautiful Colombian dance group. And as we do it in other cities, I'm here to let you know that we have a beautiful dance group that is for the community, that we are happy to be in every single event that we're invited. And, uh, we want to show the beauty of our culture and dances in Hackensack. We also have guitar, uh, classes. We, we do also, uh, zumba for kids, activities for kids. Um, and we're happy to keep working together with the city of Hackensack. I have here the check. And I'm also wanna thank Greg Liosi, that is here. Greg, if you wanna come, please? And, um, because he has been very helpful with ICal. We've been working together and we've been using the old Cultural Arts Center. And we're happy to use the new one for the culture of Hackensack. So thank you so much. I have the check here with me and I'm gonna give it to you, major. Thank you.
Can we come down, take a picture? Thank you so much.
I just want to personally thank OC. ICal is such, has been such an important organization, uh, promoting the arts. Uh, and they've found a home with us, like you said, back in 2007, at 39 Broadway. And they've provided some really amazing programming. And to see their dedication for this new facility, it really means so much more for a group like this who's really taking participation and really, uh, taking stock in their, what will be their new home, uh, hopefully, uh, within the next year. So it's really, it ma, it means so much more. And we really appreciate all that they've done and really appreciate this incredible effort that you've done for the new facility. So thank you.
Well, thank you. And I, well, we can't say enough about ICal. You've been in the city for years, doing, doing great work. Um, you know, the classes for the kids, the zumba, keeping people healthy, uh, the shows, you know, the fundraising, like you've been doing, not just for this, but for other things I've seen in the past. And the city appreciates your involvement. And that's what all this, the cultural arts push in Hackensack is about, is involvement of all our different cultures, uh, in this case, your group. And, uh, we look forward to having you in the new building as soon as it's open.
Yeah.
Because, yes. And, uh, look forward to seeing some of the beautiful shows that you guys do as well. And any comments from the rest of the council?
Again, thanks a lot, not only for the contribution, but as the mayor said, for all that you bring to the city. And we enjoy all the differences that everyone brings. Uh, I was at, actually, over this weekend, Councilman Sims and I were at a cultural awareness day at the Seventh Day Adventist Church. And I said I was gonna borrow their slogan if it was okay because I think it was apropos, not only to their church, but to our city. And their slogan was, "We may come from many, but we are one." And I think that signifies a lot of what we see in the city. We come from many different cultures, but I see that we bring the best of all those cultures to form our city. And thank you for helping us do that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Dave?
Last week, also had zumba in the park. And we're just great to see so many people out there.
I saw it on Facebook. You had a lot of people, too, there.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
We missed you at Latin Night at the park. It was a fantastic event.
I miss it too. I really wanna be there. I was away on vacation. But definitely for next year, you know, I'm so happy. Any, any kind of culture that you need, ICal, we're there for Hackensack. And, um, it will be, we'll be happy to bring my kids to show something or a video so you can see the beauty of, that we have, you know, that we've grown in the, in our, in our dance group. But thank you so much, and we're happy to keep working together.
And we thank you. We appreciate it. Can we do a photo real quick? How do you do your camera? Wonderful job. Ready? One, two, three, one, five, two.
Thank you. Thank you.
Say, "Hadi Sarah." Oh, thank you. We kept this to, uh, the money guy? That's what, last thing I wanted is.
Everybody, show the handle. Show the handle.
Okay. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the Cal and Regular Minute Meeting on July 25th, 2016.
Can I make a motion?
Um, Councilmember Jones, you were absent for that meeting.
You were at that meeting?
You know. And I'll offer.
August 22nd.
Roll call.
Actually, you're not gonna be able to do it because you won't have enough to vote. I just realized that.
Yeah.
Three's not enough?
Oh, no, wait. Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. I was thinking.
Yeah.
It's been a bad day. A long day. Okay, I need a motion. I'm sorry. I'll offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Potaglia is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Abstain.
Mayor LaBrosse?
Aye. Thank you. City managers report.
Six items this evening. The first has to do with garbage collection. We're going to return to one-day-a-week collection on the week of Labor Day, which is September 5th. 5th. We will be sending out NICSIL alerts, reverse 911, email blast, and white website notification. So if you have a neighbor that does not have access to that, please let them, let them know. We've received a grant from the county to reconstruct a playground in Faschini Park. We will be actually raiding, raising the elevation so, to prevent some of the issues we've had in the past with flooding. Again, we'd like to thank ICal for their contribution check to the Hackensack Performing Arts Center. The fourth item is, we have been notified that we have gotten a federal award of $130,817. It's a firefighter's assistance grant. And special thanks to Deputy Chief Nyland, to Millennium Strategies, our grant writer, and also to the county executive who assisted us in preparing the grant and pushing the grant for the city. As many of you know, he is a dedicated fireman and really believes in fire protection. So that's great news. It's actually going to cover some of the elements that we have bonded for, the re-bringing in new hoses, the new five-inch lines, as well as the equipment needed for our rescue and shoring up the Owassa truck that we had to replace all the lumber. Now this grant will repay what we have to put out for that. So I think that's really great news. Our share will be $12,851. Second, or the fifth item is Main Street Parking Meter Enforcement. The ordinance has been in place for a long time. The enforcement will start to be enforced. The parking enforcement will be extended from 9:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. on weekdays and from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Saturdays. Please comply with the posted signs. I've instructed to the, the parking enforcement officers to be gentle until everybody gets used to it. This will actually promote freer flow of traffic and the ability to find parking at shops on the weekends and in the evening. Number six, Carver Park Splash Park and the Polyfly Park Splash Park, I'm pleased to announce that they will remain open for weekends only through the month of September, weather permitting. So if it's raining out or cold, I don't think it'll be open. But if it's hot and the summer is extended, we'll provide that opportunity for the weekends only. The whole month of September, after Labor Day. So Labor Day, it's going to be open. And then after Labor Day, it'll go into that mode. That ends the manager's report.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on, Resolution 303-16. Are you okay to read, Deb?
Yeah, I'm all right. I just sound funny. Sorry. I apologize. At the end of the night, I might not even sound at all. This is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 31-2016, a bond ordinance amending and restating in entirety bond ordinance number 26-2015, finally adopted by the City Council of the City of Hackensack in the County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, on July 7th, 2015, to increase the appropriation and the authorization to amend and supplement other provisions therein and canceling bond ordinance number 30-2016 as introduced. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
I have a motion to open to the public, please.
Motion?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Anybody would like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward. Seeing none, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Motion to adopt?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, that ordinance number 31-2016 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 304-16.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 32-2016, an ordinance amending Part II entitled General Legislation, Chapter 170 entitled Vehicles and Traffic of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code, to amend Section 50 entitled Schedule I No Parking, and Section 51 entitled Schedule II No Parking Certain Hours.
I have a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 32-2016 as introduced is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on September 12th, 2016 at 8:00 p.m. or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be, and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 305-16.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 33-2016, a refunding bond ordinance of the City of Hackensack County of Bergen, New Jersey, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $10,65,000 aggregate principal in amount of refunding bonds and/or refunding notes of the city for the purpose of paying amounts owing to various taxpayers for taxes levied in the city and appropriating the proceeds of such refunding bonds slash refunding notes to such purpose.
I have a motion, please.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 33-2016 as introduced does now pass on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on, it says September 12th, but it should say September 27th, 2016 at 8:00 p.m. or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be, and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 300...
Mayor, we could just, just to clarify that, yeah, the public hearing will be September 27th and not September 12th.
September 27th is the public hearing?
Yes. Okay, that needs to be stated clearly in the minutes when, when the time comes for me to borrow the money.
Okay. Got that? We're good? Resolution 306-16.
This is a resolution authorizing award of bid contract for the Hackensack Performing Arts Center renovation.
I have a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Resolution 307-16.
This is a resolution requesting approval of items of revenue and appropriation as per NJS A48, Vol. 4-87 Emergency Management Agency Assistance Grant.
A motion, please.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Resolution 308-16.
This is a resolution authorizing the accrued time payout of $96,681.67 to Police Officer John Keno.
Motion, please.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Resolution 309-16.
I'd like to make a motion to table this resolution.
Okay, motion to table has been made. Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
That was a motion to table Resolution 309-16.
Resolution 310-16.
This is a resolution authorizing the payment of bills.
A motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Okay, does anybody need anything pulled from the consent agenda before we move forward with it?
Um...
Seeing none?
Uh, I, I don't know if we should pull 327 because I need to add somebody for that.
Yeah, you have to pull it from the consent.
We'll pull 327?
327 for the issuance of request for qualifications.
Does it have to be read separately or we're just going to...
Yes, because we need to add one that's not listed on here.
All right, so we're going to pull 327-16?
Anybody have anything else?
Anybody else? No?
Okay, the following items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any item requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda, and the consent agenda items will be reflected in full in the minutes, including any exceptions and or additions. The consent agenda includes Resolution 311-16, a resolution authorizing renewal of liquor licenses for 2016-17, Resolution 312-16, a resolution authorizing recreation refunds, Resolution 313-16, a resolution authorizing the appointment of special officers for 2016 academy class, Resolution 314-16, resolution recognizing September 15th as blessings in a backpack, Resolution 315-16 is a resolution authorizing veterans tax exemption, Resolution 316-16 is a resolution authorizing a board appointment, Resolution 317-16 is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of the State of New Jersey 2014 Safe and Secure Communities Grant, Resolution 318-16, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of the State of New Jersey 2015 Safe and Secure Communities Grant, Resolution 319-16 is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of the State of New Jersey 2016 Safe and Secure Communities Grant, Resolution 320-16 is a resolution authorizing a place-to-place transfer liquor license for PALCAN, Resolution 321-16 is a resolution authorizing tax collector to convert charges to property needs, Resolution 322-16 is a resolution authorizing group affidavit accepting the 2015 annual audit, Resolution 323-16, a resolution for ratification of the Fire Superior's contract, Resolution 324-16, a resolution awarding the contract for engineering services related to DSO Assessment Management Plan to Arcadis, Resolution 325-16, a resolution qualifying professional service providers and authorizing the mayor to execute contracts with such qualified professionals, Resolution 326 is a resolution authorizing application to local finance board, Resolution 328-16 is a resolution authorizing award of contract for engineering services for traffic signal at Prospect Street and Beach Street, and Resolution 329-16 is a resolution authorizing tax refunds.
Okay.
We need a motion.
Need a motion to accept the consent agenda as it was read?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Okay, and then Resolution 327-16 is a resolution authorizing the issuance of requests for qualifications for professional services to the City of Hackensack. The following professional services are hereby authorized: public defender and a conflict public defender, tax appeal attorney, consulting municipal engineer, special litigation counsel, and we added redevelopment attorney.
Okay.
We need a motion.
Motion to amend? I'll make a motion to amend, add redevelopment attorney.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
And then you need a motion to adopt.
Motion to, I need a motion to adopt the resolution.
Offer. Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Thank you.
And that's it.
Need a motion to open to the public, please?
Second.
Roll call.
I'm sorry, who seconded? I did. Councilmember Pataglia is absent. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Okay, floor is open to the public. For those who'd like to speak, please come forward. Give your name and address to the clerk.
Hi, Mark McCart, Hackensack resident, also the UPS EU representative for the sanitation employees. I want to start off by thanking some of the council folk for supporting the anti-privatization move. I'm very glad that they were brave enough and principled enough to come out and say that you're against privatization regardless of the numbers that we saw. And I was actually hoping maybe somebody else might want to join them tonight. I noticed Councilman Pataglia is not here. I thought if anybody else wants to stand up against privatization tonight, I'd give you that opportunity. If not, I guess we can talk about the fact that the bids were opened. And I think we could see just from a really rough analysis that we are not going to see a savings, just doing some really rough numbers. If anything, we're going to probably see that our costs are going to go up. So it's going to cost more to privatize. So not only does it do harm to the community, to the employees, it's actually going to cost taxpayers more money. I'd like to yield the rest of my time and maybe ask the CFO to give us an idea of what type of factors are going to be considered in doing the fiscal analysis for privatization to compare the numbers of the bids.
Okay, well, the original, is, okay, Mayor? Absolutely. The original financial analysis that was done, the preliminary analysis that was done, you know, it was based on the existing costs of, of running the garbage collection as it stands today, which would include salaries and wages, health benefits, pension, social security, workers' comp, as well as operating expenses such as, off the top of my head, vehicle repairs, supplies.
Gas.
Fuel was in there as well. Now, that was the preliminary analysis, okay? The analysis that we're going to be doing now is going to be completely different, okay? Because Mayor and Council have set the direction of no layoffs.
Right.
So it's hard to say, you know, exactly what will be in that analysis, you know? But it would be all costs exclusive of personnel costs.
Do we know if we're going to still keep the trucks that we currently have?
No, we don't know.
So at this point, we're not going to really see a significant savings from wages, salaries, social security, because we're not really laying off people, maybe a small number, but very small. We're probably, I'm thinking, keeping the trucks for recycling, leaf pickup, and a lot of other things. So we're not going to see any savings from operations. So I'm not really sure what you're going to compare. There's not going to be a whole lot of room there for savings. Last question is, when do you think we're going to have the final analysis? I know you said four to six weeks.
Four to six weeks, yeah.
Can we maybe narrow that down a little?
Five weeks?
Okay. Thank you. You can always ask, Mark. Thank you all.
Next, please.
Good evening, Alexis Palancas, 235 Prospect. First, I'd like to thank you for, especially Greg Leosie, for that great summer concert series. It was really wonderful. Nice range of programs available, so thank you for that. I have three questions, but I want to do them all first, so don't answer. Okay?
Okay.
First one is, I've been asking about a drop-off bin for used or unused prescription drugs. So many towns are doing that, and I don't think we still don't have that. Is there any way that we can get that going at the police department? Second question is, the reasoning you... City manager did say the reasoning behind extending the meters' parking fee till nine o'clock at night. I'd like that clarified because... I'd like that clarified. And the third thing is, the funding for the arts center. We're having trouble getting money for that, correct? My... I guess my confusion is, what is the cost for the dome? The infamous dome down at Foshini Park? I don't... I would like to know the cost of that, and why can't some of the money from that be allocated to the arts center or to improve our garbage trucks? Those are my questions. Now you may answer.
I'll start with the... And I agree with you, and I'm actually looking into the drop-off bins to do a program with the hospital and through the police department for prescription drugs or, you know, to drop them off, so we are looking at that. The parking fee clarification, I will defer to the city manager.
The current ordinance does regulate parking till nine o'clock at night, so what we're doing is we're gonna be starting enforcement of that.
Why?
Because that's what the ordinance says.
So can't the ordinance be changed to bring it back to six o'clock?
Where... It is at eight o'clock or nine o'clock, and it's part of the downtown redevelopment to try to encourage turnover of the key parking spots.
So that's throughout the whole city? Any meters throughout the whole city?
Uh, it is targeted at Main Street.
Oh, okay.
The other one is the funding bond for the arts center, and why can't we use money from other bonds such as...
Yeah, how much was allotted for the dome?
The dome, I believe, is $7 million.
Yeah, the ordinance for the sports dome was $7 million. That's a policy decision of the mayor and council. If money were to be taken from that toward the arts center, okay, that would require an ordinance amendment, which is... Would also be a policy decision of the mayor and council. You saw that what we did earlier was we adopted the ordinance for the performing arts center, you know, to allocate additional funding for that.
And yet, all this... Where is all this money coming from?
Well, the... All of this is capital money, and when we did the...
Excuse me. Whoever's doing it, blurt it out from the audience, all right? Please stop, or I will ask you to leave. Thank you, sorry. Sorry, folks.
When we did the capital presentation earlier this year, I believe it was May, but I'm not exactly sure, we had made the statement, you know, that we were looking to make extensive capital improvements within the city, including the performing arts center, including the sports dome, street pavings, Main Street, State Street, a lot of projects. And what we had said at that time, that all of that capital improvement would be done under the existing debt service budget, which means that the debt service component of the municipal budget wouldn't be increased to pay for any of these projects.
Okay. And so can any of that $7 million from the dome be slipped over to the arts center? Since arts center came first, am I not right? Wasn't the arts center...
Yes, it was.
Right? I mean, that's been talked about for years and years.
I don't know the answer, whether you can take from... Rob from Peter to pay Paul, basically.
You'd have to amend both ordinance... Or you'd have to amend the ordinance.
You'd have to amend the ordinance, but now it's fully funded. But I also want to make it clear, Mr. Palancas, just because we've bonded that money doesn't mean we're spending all that money. It's just the opportunity to do that, should we want to go ahead with that project.
Okay, well, I just... I mean, my opinion is that the arts center services, so like the entire community, children, two adults.
Absolutely.
And it was brought up first, so I just think that you get priority.
It is now fully funded, so...
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Next, please.
Steve Gelber, 304 Clem Place, I have a few things. I'm looking at the city code. Unfortunately, I don't have all the time in the world to rebut city manager. I'll come back and talk again, but are you sure it's still nine o'clock already? Because it does say extend. It says to extend the time.
I believe it is in the ordinance, but I will double-check for you.
All right, because I'd want to be really certain of that, because even if it is in the ordinance, it's not being enforced now. I regularly frequent restaurants on Main Street. You say it's for redevelopment and development of downtown. I hardly think that having patrons of restaurants go out to feed the meter during dinner is friendly to development and downtown, building up the downtown. I hardly think that that's helping. As to the $7 million estimates on just building the dome, do those or do those not include possible site remediation?
I'm not sure what you mean. Site remediation?
Maybe soil issues?
Yeah, that's included.
That's... You sure?
Mm-hmm.
Included in the $7 million? Okay, perfect. John, I came and talked twice now about this second round of the PR fiasco. First time he broke the law, second time potentially you broke the law. I was a little not surprised, but worked up when I read the records coverage of this issue to see... Well, first, before I say about your comments about Mr. Salkin, and lord knows, everyone knows I have no love and allegiance to Mr. Salkin, but to think that there's bribery because somebody wrote two sentences not on the city's dime, "There was no discussion. As far as I know, he was working for us already." Well, was it on the city's dime? Did you not think it was on the city's dime, or did you think you guys were paying him? Your statement to the record in and of itself contradicts itself, and then prior, you threw up your arms very excited that it had nothing to do with the city. I agree 100%. Had nothing to do with the city. If he was hired, he shouldn't have been writing that PR piece. That was a campaign piece for you, for Citizens for Change. Well, not Citizens for Change, because how many times has that been diced up and thrown around, and who's not gonna run with who, who is gonna run with who, even though we got a booty in the bank on political donations of people that got contracts? Mr. McCart, you might want to throw into the financial analysis potential donors. Your statement in and of itself just contradicts itself. This was a bribe. There's no two ways about it. He did something for you personally, for you, for a campaign piece that benefited the city in no way. Johnny Smith on the street does not care that you're not voting for Donald Trump, like I told you at the next meeting after it. That was a PR stunt for you politically on the city's dime, which we thought was the city's dime, but unfortunately, it wasn't. It was on nobody's dime, which means very potentially was just a bribe. Now, you said LaBrus said Salkin's lawsuit has absolutely no merit. To me, I gotta look where it's coming from. It's a political stunt that stinks of the old-style politics that have plagued this town forever. Take it where it's coming from. I don't love Mr. Salkin, but is he right on? You're damn right, he's right on. Was Regina right on when she came to meetings to talk about having to a month or proper notice of meetings or green acres or anything else that she came here and talked about? And what'd you do? You brushed it off and you said, "Take it where it's coming from. It's political. She's against me. She doesn't want me to do this." No, people want you to do what's right. People want you to follow the law and do what's right, do what you got elected to do. Spend our funds wisely. Advance the city. Do things properly, not advance yourself. So, yes, is Mr. Salkin on the opposite side of the aisle, if you will, from you? Yeah. But are you wrong? Yeah. Don't walk down the street with your mouth open and not expect to catch some flies in it. He may be on the opposite side of the aisle from you, but is he 110% correct? You're darn right. And to you, Mr. Mangan, you said, "I want you to just clarify, you're not going to include personnel costs in the financial analysis as to the sanitation, privatizing sanitation." How can you possibly... I mean, we go to the tapes, I... That's why I'm asking for you to clarify it.
Okay, there will be personnel costs involved.
Because you can't exclude personnel costs, because if we're not laying anyone off, and we've got 30 or so guys that we're gonna continue to pay, you have to add that to what the contract would cost and then say, "What does sanitation x the salaries cost?"
All right, Mr. Gelber.
There's no way you're gonna save money.
Mr. Gelber.
There's no possible way.
Mr. Gelber. Five minutes is up. Thank you. He can answer if he wants, but you're done.
Like 41% rate, 21% per year raises, so I wouldn't be surprised if we do save money.
Next, please.
Brown, Nita Sharif, Second Street, Hackensack. Before I begin, I picked up a flyer from Reverend Jackson's church. It says, "Adopt a block Saturday, August 27th." It's gonna be like a mini Apollo out there, music, free food, games, haircuts, dancing stepper singers, et cetera. So I just wanted the community to know, because it invites the whole city of Hackensack, which I don't know if everybody was aware of, but hopefully you're aware now.
I wasn't aware.
Debbie, I see you shaking your head, yes. And I want to thank Dave, for the most part, this summer, for keeping the kids off the street again. I do it a lot of children, the basketball program, and all the positive things that have been going on in the community. Even now that the season is over, the children are still organizing in different towns to play basketball, because that's where their mindset is. So I'm looking to have some good players out of this league that comes up in the summer and the high school league coming up. Dave, you did a great job, you and your staff. I commend you. That last game was a little rough, that slam dunk and all that, but it was a good... It was a good game, and the kids showed a lot of their skills, so kudos to you for that. The splash pad, Carver Park, Second Street Park, is not at its full potential. Again, people in the community, as I poll them, they're still saying they have to go down to register. I tried to explain to people, you don't have to go down to register. You can register right in the park. Most of the time, there's nobody there anyway, just come on in. So I think we need to come up with something to let the community know that you don't have to go down there to register on Walt Street, because they're not gonna go down there. A lot of people are not gonna go. They can't afford to go down there, and all day they're watching children up, you know, at their homes, so they cannot afford to go down there during the day. So we need to put some kind of notice out, some kind of way to let the community... Because I do door-to-door, I walk, I asked Pat if she could put it in bilingual. We have a lot of Spanish-speaking people in my neighborhood. They don't understand what I'm saying, and children are trying to translate for me as I pass their homes and hand out flyers. So that would be a help if we could get that going, because it's being underused. That post outside in the hallway has more children at that splash pad picture than we have at Second Street Park. The summer concerts were great. It was a great uplifting thing for our community. The theater at night is wonderful. I know, Dave, you did a lot of going door-to-door, knocking the churches and things of that nature last week, because everywhere I went, they said Dave was just here with flyers. So the place was packed last week, was very nice. The Theater Under the Stars, if you don't know about it, is on Thursdays. Children, adults, you bring your lawn chairs, your blankets. It's really beautiful, it's a nice experience. I have to say, it's something different for the kids and for the community. Again, I want to mention the garbage. I'm not clear on where we are with the sanitation. I know I heard a lot tonight, but I'm still a little confused with what we're doing with that. Of course, we still support it, and we think that should be taken off the table, but we're hoping you do the right thing. And one more thing for you, Mr. City Manager. I know when I was here one time at a meeting, the police officer was talking about periodical raises and things of that nature. Are they getting those now? Because I know I heard one officer say they make like 800... They bring home like $800 every two weeks. I was making it in the early 2000s, I was working for the telephone company. Is that moving forward?
Can't talk much about negotiations, because it's... The... Since I'm getting discussions from outside there, the question is, we are in negotiations. There was a recent ruling in March from the Atlanta County about step movement. The officers have received their step movement after they had requested it in their initial negotiations that was not going to be implemented. We have implemented that, and as soon as some other things are ironed out, we'll be renegotiating.
Okay, and that'll be moving along in a timely manner for them?
It's kind of up to them. And up to the civil service right now. It's kind of outside of the city's hands.
Okay. And you won't be here to see that that's completed?
I'm working so that we can.
May as be seen. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Carolyn Davis. I want to say thank you to Greg Leosie, to Randy, to everybody who had anything to do with the activities at the Atlantic Street Park. I went to every festival. I missed the Latin one. I knew that was gonna be a big one, but I was away that week, but it has really been enjoyable to go down there in our city. I used to go over to Brooklyn where my son lives, and they have activities all the time, so it was great to see that, and I enjoyed them. The only thing I want to say tonight about the sanitation, because I know it's still up in the air, I am still against privatization. I know that one of the meetings, when all this was discussed, it was said that when we do, you have more information, you would have a larger meeting for the public, the public would be notified, and you would move the venue, hopefully, to a larger place like the middle school. I just hope that that is all still in the planning, and then the public will be notified of that. That's all. Thank you.
Hi, Randy Glover, Hackensack. I'm representing Tri-Act Community Development Corporation this evening. I also would like to thank Greg Leosie very much for just having the foresight to step out of this conference zone and have all of the concerts that were just mentioned on Atlantic Street. They were very successful. I'd like to thank the whole city council, Deb, Geddes especially, David, and the mayor, deputy mayor, everyone. Very supportive. Thank you for coming out. Also, because of you guys, if you don't know yet, this Thursday at the Shopsett Riverside, because of everything that was going on...
We'll be there.
Yeah, Tony DeSara will be there from 5:00 to 7:00. He performed at the gala for the Upper Main Street benefit, so I hope to see everybody there. Okay? Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Randy.
Regina de Paspo, Parker Avenue. This whole enforcement of the parking meters, it took me a while, but I tracked it down in... First, in 2014, you tried to, you made some changes, but that ordinance was till 6:00. The ordinance said, if you look it up online, says to 6:00. But in 2015, July, a year ago, is when you put through an ordinance at 9:00 p.m. In a year, you have not enforced it. Don't even know when you did it. You don't have to look it up now. It's ordinance 27, 2015, okay? And... But that ordinance also reduced from a two-hour limit to a 100-minute limit on Main Street. I don't know about you, but I don't want to go, oh, you know, I gotta go feed my meter, I gotta go out there. I don't always get dinner done in 100 minutes, okay? I can go to... If I want to go to Noche de Colombia, I can go to Englewood, and I can find a place to park that I don't have to watch the meter. I can go elsewhere. There are a lot of other options. You are pushing people away from Main Street. To 9:00, 100 minutes. I mean, sometimes I go out to dinner early. My son's leaving for college. We're going out to dinner a lot, and we go early, and so he can go out after. If I go at 6:00, I don't want to be, you know, Paul leaves, my husband and I have a drink or something after. I don't want to have to run out and feed the meter. Do you realize what you're doing? You have not enforced it in a year. Why now? You hired part-time people? That's gonna cost us, but I don't think you're gonna get the revenue to even cover what you're paying them. It's ridiculous. And you're hurting the businesses. It's hurting the businesses. What's open at nine o'clock on Main Street? Restaurants, that's it. What else is open at nine o'clock on Main Street? Nothing. They closed down five, six, seven maybe. And you reduced it to a hundred minutes. But you guys, you know, nobody even was aware that that was the ordinance from a year ago. So I think it's horrible for business, it's horrible for residents, it's horrible for bringing people in. You're gonna keep people moving on, on Main Street? Yeah, they're gonna move right by. They're gonna go, keep going north. You can go into River Edge, you can go into New Milford. You can go someplace else and have dinner and not have to watch a meter. I thought it was bad enough when the sign said seven, but now it's, you're gonna force it to nine. That, that's horrible. That, that's absolutely horrible for the businesses, for the residents, for anything to happen on Main Street. And it starts today? Or does it start September 1st? I kept getting these nixels, I don't even know when it starts. We're so confused on these things. And you're confusing all of us. But it, I, it is absolutely horrible. Carver Park, you know, Greenacre says you can do registration by mail. Has anybody in six weeks offered that to the residents? That they could get, call direct department and get an application by mail? No. Because I, I asked you if you spoke to this woman, because I've talked to this woman from Greenacres, but you have no interest because you want to keep it, you wanna keep it small? Yeah, it's small. There's nobody using it. There's nobody using it. I'm glad we have the firefighters' contract. I wish you would listen to what the residents want as far as sanitation. I really think you're spreading yourselves too thin with the dome and the cultural arts and all the other projects on, on the plate. You're spreading us too thin, you really are. Too thin. And opening us up to more lawsuits. This was, you know, one of your platforms, we weren't gonna have so many lawsuits. But I've, I've been told that the liability policies are extremely low. This question's for you, Mr. Carver, really. What, I have two questions, so let me. What happens if we're sued and the judgment exceeds the insurance policy limit? Where does that money come from? Okay? Our policy is very low. People are gonna get some large settlements from us, I bet. And my second question is, sometimes people sue for punitive damages. And if they get a judgment for punitive damages against an individual city official, who pays that?
As you know, I'm the attorney for the mayor and council. I'm not authorized without their okay to give legal advice to the general public.
So who's got our backs? The residents here? You're the city attorney?
No, no, no. Now, come on. I'm not the attorney for every resident in the city, it doesn't work that way.
But we're on our own. We're, we're...
No, quite, quite the contrary. If the mayor would like me to answer the question, I'll answer it.
I don't have an issue with you answering the question.
The city, the city has what's called an SIR, self-insured retention, which I think currently is $250,000, but it may be $500,000. After that, there are various layers of insurance. We're a member of the South Bergen Joint Insurance Fund and the Municipal Excess Liability Fund. Millions and millions and millions of dollars in coverage. There is no need for anybody to fear a recovery that the, that can't be funded. As far as punitive damages are concerned, those cannot be awarded against a municipality or governmental entity by law. However, they can be awarded against an individual. As you may have heard, there's a federal statute, 1983, which is routinely pled when suing individuals. A municipality does have the option of compensating or reimbursing someone working, and it often involves police officers. That, I spent, I think, starting in about 1986, defending police officers and there's often a gratuitous pleading of a 1983 and sometimes unfortunately it gets triggered. But the municipality always has the option of reimbursing anyone that has a punitive damage award lodged against them. I've been doing this a long time, I've never had that happen. I've had it alleged, but never actually awarded by a jury.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other question didn't get answered. Why now with the parking? It's been a year, on the books for a year.
Mr. Trost?
My job is to enforce the ordinances that are passed. And we're letting the public know that we're gonna start enforcing that. If the council wants to change that, that policy and that ordinance, that's up to them.
I strongly suggest that they do that.
Next, please.
Richard Solkan, Hackensack, New Jersey. And Stephen didn't leave me enough, a lot to say, I'm afraid, but I love you though, I want you to know that. I wanna be you when I grow up, I mean that, Stephen. John, if, if this meeting had been held last Wednesday or Thursday, I would've come in here breathing fire at you, really. Being just as snarky as you were in your public statements. Really. Ridiculous political stunt. You know, I operate under canons of ethics. I'm not allowed to bring frivolous actions, John. An absolutely no merit. I just want you to consider the following, where we stand on this. I've got you, who I'm sure never even saw the complaint, knows nothing about the factual allegations in the complaint, knows nothing of the definitions of bribery in the state of New Jersey, knows nothing, as we have seen throughout these three and a half years, about ethics in the state of New Jersey, saying no merit. On the other hand, John, I have a Superior Court judge who looked at the complaint and issued an order to show cause that's gonna bring the city to defend itself, September 12th. I think you're not ahead in this right now. And I think maybe you shouldn't run your mouth. I think frankly, but you did me a favor. Mrs. Canestrino and the judge knew enough not to quote, be quoted. You on the other end, there was, there was an ambiguity. I wasn't sure if there was consideration paid or not. Because if you go back to the tape of June 14th, Regina asked you, and it's not really clear what the answer was. But then you said, "We didn't pay anything." I waited to file this though, because I waited till your PAC, Citizens for Change PAC, filed this quarterly return to see if perhaps you did the right thing and paid the public relations firm. Of course you didn't, you didn't. Do you see, do you have any insight into the scenario of this? You put out a request for qualifications. You set a deadline. Before you ever make a decision, we have, I can't pronounce his name, I know his son is here, I mean no disrespect. Thank you. Announcing in a press release, we met with city officials, elected city officials last week. Of course, when you look at your RFQ, it says they're to have no contact, no contact with any city official unless Deborah Carlson directs you. Did you direct anybody to contact the mayor and council, Madam City Clerk?
No.
Oh, oh, wait, now, now we're saying, wait, tell me, Judge, after he runs his mouth like that, you're gonna now, let me hear it. So say, I wanna hear you say, "Don't comment on the case after what he said about me." Let's hear it, Judge.
That's a whole different issue, what he said about you personally, but I am advising, since you initiated the litigation and the matter is in litigation, I'm advising the...
The Fifth Amendment counsel, God bless you. God bless you.
I'm advising the clerk and advising the members of the mayor and council.
Nonsense, nonsense, you ought to be ashamed of yourself.
Not to, are you talking to me?
I sure am, oh, I sure am.
Oh, I think it's pretty common that one is not to comment on pending litigation.
Did you ever have this conversation with the mayor? Because he doesn't apparently follow that, does he?
No comment.
Peter Marcus, Annie Davis Avenue, Hackensack. I would just like to say that I totally disagree with Rich Solkan. Let the record show. Just kidding, of course. Being of Italian-American heritage, I've always felt for a long time that the last thing the city of Hackensack would ever wanna do is outsource sanitation, with all due respect to my ancestors. But I'll tell you, somebody introduced the idea that there should be outsourcing sanitation for one reason or another. I don't know where the idea, you know, originated. And I do think that once that idea was put forth and the council decided to take a firm look at it, even though the community expressed their concerns, and rightfully so, about the workers and there was some, obviously, some accommodations made in terms of saving jobs, I do think that the process ought to go through to its final conclusion. I think any one of us here, quite frankly, can see the handwriting on the wall that the sanitation department is not gonna be outsourced. But the fact of the matter is, is that as long as the process has begun, we ought to gather the data, we ought to come up with a presentation and see it through to its final conclusion. I, I think there's a lot of people here who are nervous about that. Money's gonna have to come up for the new trucks, obviously. But I do think in my heart, and I hope I'm right, that's why I don't think, I'm not here to yell and scream and stamp my feet, I do think that the numbers will, will prove that we, we should keep it in-house and probably some other benefits in the long term will accrue as well over time by doing that. The thing about the parking on Main Street, this is, it's funny because we went out to dinner and I went to put money in the meter and it said, I think that the, there's a tag on the meters that said, you know, meters, you only, you only put money in the meters through six o'clock. And then there's a sign ten feet, ten feet down the road that says later. I don't know whether it's eight o'clock or nine o'clock on Main Street. But there's a disparity between what the parking meter itself has on it, a little tag, and the actual signs on Main Street. But be that as it may, I do think however you look at the, the fees for parking and the issues going on with the redevelopment during normal business hours, something has to be done, I think, with the drop dead time of six o'clock. I don't think if anybody goes to dinner at five, they can feed the meter for an hour and if they stay until nine, they've already paid their dues. And I, I think it's silly to try and extend it beyond that, especially because of the restaurants. Whatever revenue is generated is, is, at that point of the day, I don't think is a big deal. We're not concerned about turnover because we're not talking about retail stores. So I think we should really take another look at that and perhaps make something come of it. I'm not gonna talk about the publicist, obviously, you know, we're dealing with some potential litigation here. I see it differently personally. Obviously, the legality and the timing is significant, but I see it as, I see it as an opportunity for a publicist to, to present something, some body of work that the city council can say, hey, you know, these people did a good job on this press release. Maybe we should take a look at them. But anyway, be that as it may, the fact that Kathy and John, and we say it here in this diverse community of Hackensack, stood up and said, "Donald Trump is not our guy and we don't wanna be affiliated with him in any way for all the negativity that is associated with," I think took a lot of courage. And I think it does accrue to the council and to the residents of Hackensack. It's not a political ploy. It's a statement of fact that we are your representatives and we don't like this guy and we are gonna renounce our Republican affiliation on that basis alone. That takes courage and I applaud you for that. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Rich Serbo, Hackensack, Spring Valley Avenue in Hackensack, okay? How are you, Mr. Mayor?
I'm good.
Council? Mr. Carver? Mr. Trost? Mr. Mayor?
Hey, Rich.
Yeah, I just wanna talk about the Cultural Arts Center and hopefully this is going to happen. It keeps getting pushed back. I, I know there's some kind of hope now that this is going to happen by next summer, maybe? And, you know, would be, would be a great thing for the theater. Now, I, I know there's lots of talk about the entertainment in town, you know, there's lots of groups and bands, but keep in mind that there's a professional theater group in Hackensack and they've been performing here for nine years, okay? It's called the Company Theater Group. We're still in the theater behind St. Francis Church. We are dying to get into the new theater and let it rip, okay? So I, I urge you to try to see if you can get behind that Cultural Arts Center to get it done, okay? Now, the next show for our group is September 17th it starts. Now, this is, these are professional actors, they've been on London stages, New York stages. This is, this is what you really wanna see when, when you're going to, to watch a theater. It's all American contemporary theater, okay? We try to empathize with the world, okay? And the next show is called "What We're Up Against." Okay, it's written by Teresa Rebeck and it's about sexism. It's about a glass ceiling for women. It's about the workplace. It's about status anxiety in the workplace. So please show up, support the show, okay? It's September 17th it starts and it starts and will go on for three weekends. And please keep that in mind that there's professional theater in Hackensack. And no one really shows up. We need some support, so please help us. Also, I just wanted to mention Henry Adams, who is one of our great historians in, in America. He's one of the, I think he's a brother of one of our early presidents, Henry Adams. And he said that people in long-term positions, especially elected officials, clergy, teachers, I'll throw them in, lots of people that sort of are in, in a position, begin and do lose their faculty of will. So I just want, I just want the mayor and council to, to remember that, guard against it because there's just a lot of dead weight around, you know what I mean? So losing your faculty of will in a position over the years is happening. It's why, it's why things are not so great in our, in our nation, okay? And right here locally, okay? Some of the little stuff, the, the, the meters, you know, I don't think you're bringing in that much with these meters. I mean, how much could you be bringing in with parking meters? And, and so if it's about revenue, I, I don't really think you're gonna be bringing in more revenue to, 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 I don't know. I, I just, I think you'd be better off doing away with the meters rather than increasing their, their presence around. So that said, have a great night. Thanks for letting me time here.
Thank you.
Good evening, Kathleen Salvo, Hudson Street, Hackensack. Gee, I think one thing that was anonymous tonight was the parking meters. Nobody wants to see it extended to nine o'clock. I don't know whose great idea that was, but retail is different, it ends at six. And it's just the restaurants. And if you go to the Cultural Arts Center and you're watching a performance, you have to run out to feed the meter? I mean, this is, you're shooting yourself in the foot. And I'm surprised Upper Main Street Alliance is allowing you to do this because this is gonna kill the restaurants. I can go to Teaneck and eat free, I can go to Englewood and eat free and I don't see why I have to put money in the meter if I wanna eat in Hackensack. And that's really gonna hurt, hurt the businesses. I really think you should reconsider this. As far as sanitation goes, we are beating this to death. And Mr. Megan, who, you are so efficient, you really need four to six weeks to figure this out. You could probably do it in ten minutes. You are so good with numbers and you're just, you're just holding us in limbo. And this is ridiculous. All these good men are waiting in the wings and we shouldn't have to wait this long. And the variable that we did, when we were going to save money, was you were gonna eliminate the personnel. Now you're keeping them, so keep them in the capacity that you're trained to do. These poor men have been working at a big disadvantage. They don't have a real superintendent to, to, to take care of them, to govern them. They don't have the right equipment and you, and I think it was sabotaged, you're trying to get rid of the department. And Mr. Trost, you said you were gonna do something when you came in and you haven't done anything. And why are we dragging our feet on this? Let's just get this resolved and, and get it done. And just so we can be in peace. Get them some trucks. It takes forever to own a truck, to buy a truck. If you order it, you're not gonna get it tomorrow. So we should be thinking in ordering trucks so we can have them when the winter sets in. I don't know how long it takes to order a truck, but I know, I know you can just, you can't walk into a showroom and buy a truck. So that's what we should be doing and, and let's get it done. It's nice that you could extend the parking, water parks for the month and you're not gonna extend the garbage if the heat, if the heat doesn't cooperate? Garbage stinks. And if we're gonna make people swim if the, if the weather cooperates, why are we not gonna collect garbage if the weather cooperates? If it's still hot past Sunday night down in the first ward and you cannot open your window and smell anything, it's disgusting. And again, the twice a week, if you have a yard and you have enough space to put it, the first ward, your garbage can is under somebody's window. We don't have the space and we have too many people. So I don't, I really, my, I don't generate garbage. I'm not doing it for me, I'm doing it for my neighborhood. We need twice a week garbage collection. It's, it's gross. So if we can extend the water park, we can extend the sanitation. So let's, let's think about that, thank you. The other thing we wanna do is, you said you have money to do these things initially, initially, you know, to do them. But once they're done, they become a line item on the budget and you have to maintain them and you have to, and the money has to be there the next year for them. So our budget is going to increase because whatever you do, if you have the money to do these items, they're gonna be on the budget for the next year to maintain them, to pay the insurance for them, to man them, it's gonna cost us money. And that, that, that's what you have to factor, you can't just do... You can't just do them and think it's done. It's not, it doesn't finish there. It's extending for the maintenance and everything else with these, the funding, the extension of the budget. So that's with that. What else? Oh, Mr. Trost, you owe me a tree in my park, because that ivy that I told you was aggressive, and it was a weed, it killed a good spruce tree. So I don't know how much it is, but I plan on getting a bill for it, and I think you should pay us before you leave, because you're a great agricultural gardening experience. I showed you it was a weed, I told you it was weed, and you told me it was ivy. So it came from next door, but you didn't make them clean up. It strangled a pine tree, and it died. Thank you.
My name is Margot Cooper. I live at 241 Stanley Place here in Hackensack. Regarding the meters on Main Street, they should remain at six o'clock. Don't force it over to nine, because when we have residents in the new apartments on Main Street, they will have friends coming into town for dinner. And it will be an imposition, as everyone has already stated, to have to run out, put money in the meters. Six o'clock is a good time to cut off. I just finished having dinner in Inglewood the other evening. Six o'clock, their meters are finished. We had our dinner, we didn't have to worry about putting coins in. I think Hackensack should follow suit on that item. In addition, there's something else I wanted to bring to the forefront. I'd like to address this to Councilman Sims pertaining to this splash pad. I was there the other day. I believe there are three staffers that are there certain hours. Is that correct?
You have to direct that to the city manager.
Oh, who hired them?
They're hired through the Recreation Department, which goes through my office. Yes, there should be three people.
Okay, three, right, okay. They were very nice young people. My question is, the season technically is finished, so therefore I think it would behoove the town to let people of Hackensack know where the young people can go for the next session, for next year, for 2017, so that they can fill out the necessary forms in time, and I do believe CPR is mandatory, so that they can get their training and they can become part of the staff at the splash pad.
They have to be licensed lifeguards.
Okay.
They have to be certified, I mean.
Can they get training somewhere prior to?
Usually at the Y.
Usually, yes, usually at the YMCA.
Okay. I think it would be nice if the residents, or maybe even the churches, would be able to follow up on the details so that we can have more young people who live in Hackensack or wherever.
It's a good idea.
Become part thereof. I think, you know, it's a good idea.
Very good idea.
Also, it's very, very hot out there. I mean, I haven't been out there, but I'm in the house, but that's beside the point. It's at the end of the season now. This is a very good time for the town to contact Home Depot and Lowe's and find out about umbrellas. And because it is the end of the season, they want to get rid of merchandise, hopefully, and they will donate to the town if the town asks. And it is a tax write-off for Home Depot and Lowe's. So hopefully someone will investigate that.
I see, just the man I know I'm going to call on.
Good. All right, I'm going to hold you on that one. And the other thing I'd like to mention, the council meeting sometime is on Mondays, sometimes on Tuesdays. It has been confusing myself and many other residents. Now, can you tell me why we have two different dates, sometimes Monday, sometimes Tuesday? And people are confused because they would like to participate here at City Council, which makes a lot of sense. Why is there a variance?
I don't know why.
Sometimes it has to do with different holidays and different calendar events. I know September, there's a lot of Jewish holidays that come into play. I know that's why some of the schedule has been modified.
If I could jump into, also during the summer months, the Summer Concert Series are on Tuesday nights, so we made a lot of the meetings on Monday. This particular one, we made on Monday as well, even though there was no concert tomorrow night, but you never know if we're going to add one or whatever. But that's probably the main reason for the ones during the summer being on Monday night.
Oh, yeah, I can understand that. Is there a possibility, as I see, as I see, that the season has not yet started? Can those concerts be held on a different day of the week so that the city council meetings nine out of 10 times will be on Tuesday, so people won't end up missing the sessions?
There is a possibility. A lot of that has to do with the acts and where else they're booked in other towns, which some towns have their meetings on Wednesday, so it's like, and I asked the very same question, why were we scheduling events on council meeting nights when I was a councilman? But that was the answer I had gotten back then, was it was.
It's the same.
It's.
It has to do with scheduling of the events.
Right. But, I mean, it's possible. If we make them on Wednesday, and the bands we wanted, we're looking for, are available for Wednesday nights, it's a possibility, sure.
Sometimes if you book performances, I used to be in show business myself, book far enough in advance.
Right.
And find out what their schedule is. Say, for instance, you want them on a Wednesday or Thursday.
Right.
Book them for that time for 2017, and then we can have our council meetings on Tuesday where everyone, you know, can participate.
I don't disagree.
Oh, okay, that sounds good.
I don't disagree, Ms. Cooper.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing nobody else from the public, motion to close.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglis absent, Deputy Mayor Canestrino, aye. Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killings?
Aye.
Mayor Gross?
Aye. Mr. Canestrino?
Yes, just a couple of things. One, it was nice to have Mr. Hogan come and give us this nice artifact that we can display here in City Hall. One of the things I heard him say that I thought was very interesting is that actually more people voted in the city of Hackensack and municipal government in 1933 than they do now.
Yeah, I wrote that down.
So please, get out, register to vote. Now it's easy, VTM, vote by mail. Absentee ballots, like before, you have a legitimate excuse, it's an option to everyone. Register if you're not registered, and get out and vote. I think that's a great message, and as he continues to portray this throughout the county, I think it's wonderful. I'd like to thank ICAL again for all they do in the city, and on top of all they're doing to actually spend some time and raise funds for our Cultural Arts Center, I think that was great, well appreciated. Also, a great story of our two city employees that stepped up to the plate to help some folks here, right with a problem here in our river. These are the kind of folks that we know are true people that love our city, work in our city, and enjoy our city. So thanks again. I know they weren't here, so it's thanks to those folks again. A couple of the things that were mentioned tonight about the Cultural Arts Center. We actually increased the funding for the Cultural Arts Center. And the reason we held a special meeting a couple of weeks ago was to make sure that it could also be adopted tonight. This was our deadline, we wanted to have it adopted tonight so we could go forward. So we had to make some changes, we found some structural damage in the building as we moved forward, we realized we needed new roofing, we wanted to make sure we had the proper dressing rooms, so we made some constructive changes to do it right the first time. You know, we don't want to make, go forward and move forward with this art center and then realize saying, if only, if only we'd done it then. So the changes that we made to the art center are definitely going to benefit the city in the long run, money well worth spending, and we're hoping to continue to raise funds. You know, there's still seats available for seat tags, we still have our wall that, you know, we can have our donor wall. So we're really going to be out, and I know Greg is involved, and Alliance is still involved, we're going to be out and continuing to raise money towards that initiative. Sanitation, I think Mr. Marcus Sandy said it very well. We're this far along in the process, let's just continue that process. We went out to find out what all of our costs were before we made an investment in these trucks. Let our finance department do their work. Let them do their analysis, present the information to the city officials and to the public, and we're going to make the right decision for the city. Should we need to fund and purchase those trucks? That's what we're going to do, and we have a plan to do that. When we came into the city, there were many, many, many things that needed to be upgraded and needed to be changed, things that hadn't been done in many, many years. We bought now, what, our second fire truck? I mean, that was long, long, long overdue. Paving of the streets, I mean, there's been so many things that have been neglected for so long. And yes, we had to prioritize. I wish we could buy the two fire trucks and the nine garbage trucks all in one year, but we couldn't. So we limped along with the sanitation trucks, we did the best we could. We fixed them, we leased a couple of new trucks to get us to where we are today. We're now at a point where we had to make that decision. Are we going to invest in the new trucks? Let's first gather all the information before we do so. And I believe that we'll work together, and we'll come up with the best solution for the city. It was great to hear how everyone is enjoying the concerts, et cetera, at the Atlantic Street Park, the concerts, the movies, that was wonderful to hear. You know, the city invested in that park a year or so ago, a grand opening last year because we felt we really had a great need for that, and it was in a wonderful location. Again, I want to thank everyone involved in this, of course Greg and his staff, our Cultural Arts Board, and Mr. Glover as well, for coming up with the type of entertainment that we need and we want here in Hackensack. So kudos to all those people, and so nice to have folks come out and say something so positive tonight. Last thing on my list, not to ignore it, it was there in the consent agenda, but we had a great audit report this year from our auditors, and I want to thank and congratulate Jim on all the hard work that he's done to make that happen. I mean, our financial statement has never looked better. The city is, finances, you know, we're well on our way to financial stability and tax stability, and it's thanks to our CFO and his staff. So again, kudos to you, Jim. Thank you, everyone, and have a good night.
Thank you. David?
This Thursday, starting at 8:00 PM, we will have another movie in the Atlantic Street Park. I believe it's Singing in the Rain. Thanks, Greg. Randy Glover and Tri-Ark, I want to thank you also for the Friday night jams. We appreciate it. Great job. I got a few cards here from some of the camps that use the splash park on a daily basis, and I'm glad to see that it is being used. Yesterday, me and the mayor, we went to a car show in honor of a young lady named Shauna. Shauna had cancer when she was six years old, and right now she's in a five-year remission. And Shauna wanted to give back to the people at the hospital, pediatric wing, who helped her, you know, along the way. In the hospital, the nurses pay for the Band-Aids. Teachers call them stickers when a kid does well. Shauna has raised over 12,000 Band-Aids, and she plans on giving them to the Hackensack University Medical Center September the 10th. I picked up two, and if anybody, they're like stickers, and when a kid gets a needle or chemo, they, it just makes them feel good. And if anybody wants to contribute, I'm quite sure we can get some kind of box downstairs in City Hall, and we can add to what this young lady has done. She's been through a lot.
So you just pick up the Band-Aids, and you drop them off in a box?
Yeah, just drop them off.
We can have a box at City Hall?
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you, good night.
Good evening. First, I just want to extend condolences to Debbie Carlson and Mr. Tim Hoffman out in the audience, and his mom, Dawn, on the loss of their aunt, sister, and cousin. And also to all of you who have lost loved ones throughout the year, especially Kathleen Salvo, your mom. Not to beat a dead horse, but I have to give props again to the Cultural Arts Department for planning such a successful summer at the park, Atlantic Street Park. The Summer Mini Concert Series was successful. It seems like it grew week after week after week. It was very well received by the community, and it also helped to introduce the Atlantic Street Park to the community, because a lot of folks didn't know that that park was there. And when they came and experienced it, they were very pleased, and a lot of them returned week after week. And for those who here on TV who enjoyed the concerts, please advocate for this Summer Mini Series to be put into the budget next year. We have a resident, Mr. Randy Glover, who came to the forefront with an idea and made it work, along with the Cultural Arts Department. And just a word to any of the residents out there, if you have a good idea, something that you've seen done in another community that you think could work here in Hackensack, bring it to us, especially, you know, if it involves the arts, but anything. We're looking for it, you know, to do good things and new things in Hackensack. Mr. Serbo, have you spoken to Rich, Greg Liosi about getting on his roster?
No, I always speak to Greg.
You always speak to Greg Liosi, okay. Okay, I think that's about it. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you, David. I too want to thank our county clerk, John Hogan, for coming down here. My guess is he's probably going to be visiting every municipality with a post aboard very similar to ours with some history from their municipality. But it was pretty good, he took the time out and had his staff do that and come and present it here, that was nice of him. I want to personally thank ICAL for all their hard work, and for their, particularly for their donation towards the Cultural Arts Center, every little bit helps. They've been a driving force, one of the driving forces in Hackensack for cultural arts, and especially Zumba, I mean, they're really known for their Zumba classes. They keep the civic center quite busy. So kudos to them. Yeah, the car show I went to with Councilman Sims yesterday was a great, great event. A little warm out there, but you know what, this little girl showed up, 11 years old, name was Shauna Moran. Like Dave said, when she was six, five or six years old, she contracted a very rare form of cancer. On September 10th, she'll be five years cancer-free, total remission. But Dave mentioned, I don't know how far he went into it, like teachers buy school supplies for their kids out of their own pocket. I know my wife's a teacher, and we spend a lot of money, you know, decent amount of money, so these kids can have some school supplies. Nurses do the same things with a lot of things for their, especially in pediatrics. And they, nurses on their own buy these Band-Aids, and that's where she came up with the idea, and it was such a great idea, and she, you know, over 1,400 boxes she's already collected. So anything we can do to help her with that would be great. Was it, it was just a, you know, we were able to give her a proclamation, too, she was very shy, and, you know, but her mother and father were there, it was, they were very happy. Tonight, you saw the last, hopefully the last go-round of the going down to the local finance board, 10 point, or $10,065,000 to pay off some of these tax appeals. Again, kudos to Jim, he just left the room, but the audit, to all involved with that, the city's in pretty good shape there. Summer Concert Series, again, I'm going to beat that horse some more, because it was a great year. We had the Tuesday night shows and complemented with the Friday night shows at the Atlantic Street Park, which just seemed, I made the last one, which was very, very well attended. The Latin night at the Atlantic Street Park drew more people than when we had Latino bands in the green. I mean, we had big, big-name, you know, Latino acts in the green, and unfortunately, they just weren't pulling the people. Could have been advertised, I don't know what was doing it, but that was well-received and well-attended. Movies Under the Stars, I've seen, been paying attention, that's doing very well. Again, Randy Glover, you still here? Great job, dude. And Greg? Right on track. Randy mentioned a guy, Tony Deser. Guys, get a chance, get down to Riverside Square. Guys, get a chance, get down to Riverside Square Thursday night from 5:00 to 7:00. This guy's the real deal. I mean, what a great performer. And he's playing in Hackensack twice in one year, that's a great thing. Maybe we can make this like a little home base for this guy. Parking meters, guys, we can change the parking meters. If we feel it's not working, we change it, all right? I think that this was done on the premise that we might be a little bit farther along on redevelopment, and there might be some more stuff going on on Main Street. We will sit and talk with, we have a parking consultant, we will sit and talk with him and go over some of the concerns that were expressed here tonight, which I think were all legitimate. And what else? Yeah, that's about it. I want to thank everybody for coming, and everybody have a great rest of your night. Thank you. Motion to close the meeting. Roll call.
Councilmember Patagali's absent, Deputy Mayor Conestino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killigas?
Aye.
Mayor O'Grus?
Aye.